That was a bid print.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. Solomon, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the flag. I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I've asked if our dear friend who loves the Lord, Mr. Spear, would come and lead us in our invocation tonight.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, first of all, for the country we live in. We thank you, Lord, for the ability to be free. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to have local government to oversee the affairs of this wonderful city that we live in. Pray right now, Lord, that you be with the council. Pray, Father, that you just instill them with wisdom, guide them on their decisions tonight. And we also pray for all those people that have been the victims of fires up north and hurricanes down in the southwest. And we understand, we have staff members, I'm sure we have community members too, that are in need of healing. Lord, we ask that you would also just touch their lives, heal them. And again, we pray right now for your guidance for this council, help this to be an open meeting, help this to be a meeting that benefits the entire community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, the city attorney's report.
Madam Mayor, there's one item in closed session. Report was given by staff. Direction was given, no final action was taken.
Thank you, sir. There are no presentations, so public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Please, each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. I'm going to let two people go first tonight because they were here at 5:00. So please, please, go ahead.
My name's Richard Mangan. I've been here about two years now, living in the city. I just had a question. What's going on with, I haven't heard anything about it, but the casino, is it going to be coming into town or not? Because basically, I want to keep my money local instead of going like to Vegas or somewhere else to spend it.
We would rather you would too. Would you gentlemen like to talk about that? It was briefly.
Yes, sir. The casino property is still in escrow. The tribe is waiting for the land to be taken into trust by the Bureau of Indian Affairs. If it's taken into trust, then they will close on the land and then they have to work out a state compact with the state of California, as well as address a tribal environmental impact report with the city and the community. So we still have a little ways to go, but really, it's all just hinging on whether or not the government will take that land into trust and allow the land swap.
Okay, thank you. And then I got one other question. I heard it on the news the other day that Amazon is looking for a distributor station to set up. They're taking bids on it. I was just wondering if you guys are going to check into that?
Oh, Amaz-- okay, I didn't hear it. Sorry.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
We're taking bids on Amazon?
Yeah, they're taking bids for located--
Well, Amaz-- Amazon wants to come here. Boy, we're ready for them.
So several, I learned about this several weeks ago, but several major cities have put in bids to try and attract Amazon to a distributor to their city. We did not put together a bid.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I heard they were still taking bids on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, Dave Matthews, my address is on file. I would first of all like to congratulate our new city administrator. I think I've already seen some changes in the agenda tonight, but before I give him credit, I'll wait and make sure these are just not flukes for this evening. Anyway, I was curious though as to who some of the other candidates were. I understand there were five or six that were being considered, but I would kind of curious as to whether how many of them were local or from out of town or whatever.
We had 20 applicants and we narrowed it down to five.
Were those, are those five available anywhere?
Well, four and one. Thank you. One dropped out the day, the day before. You're right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are they available, though? That's what I'm asking.
Pardon me?
Are they available? Their names--
Are they available? Is that legal?
I don't know why not.
Well, because some of them have jobs and we don't want them to be in trouble when we say, "Did you know your employee was down here looking for a job?"
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may--
Please.
If I may, that, sir, that was all done in closed session, so that's not publicly available.
Whatever.
Dave, if I could comment, just to look, but understanding, no, I understand you're concerned and interest, but there's so many sensitivities dealing with human resource stuff, you can imagine, because if we throw names out and then it's picked up in the paper and then somebody sends it to his boss or her boss and they go, "Well, he wasn't selected for that job in that town, so maybe we shouldn't select him for our job in our town." There's a whole lot of personal sensitive, that common sense type thing. So whether it's, you know, in fact, it's legal, we can't say anything about it, but there's also common sense reasons why we don't.
Mr. Neal.
Good evening, counsel. Just so you know, Dave, I did not put in a bid to do the job for half price like I threatened, so I wasn't one. Well, life is, continues to be interesting. I just came across a bit of information here. Let me give five copies to City Clerk. These are, you're going to think these look a little funny. The reason is that I didn't want to type in the information manually, so I had to kind of copy off of PDF pages and then do a scan to get them onto two columns. This is out of the latest Timbusha Shoshone newsletter off of their website. And as you can see, it says, "Tribe is pursuing marijuana growing and sales capability." So let me read things I've underlined here in this, just to point out what they are saying that they are currently doing. And this is on their reservation land in Death Valley, in the, you know, middle of a federal national park. They say the cannabis project is up and growing. They've developed a 50,000 square foot greenhouse that is operating. So they're continuing, they're going down to the bottom of their first column, so there continue to be political challenges and regulatory problems. We all know cannabis is federally illegal, but California passed Prop 64. And so they talk about the law situation with all this, saying that Appeal 280 State, which I'm not sure, but you guys should know what it is. Anyway, that gives state criminal, the state criminal jurisdiction on tribal land, but they're saying now that cannabis is legal in the state, they don't have the same jurisdiction on tribal land for cannabis. So now cannabis is declared by them to be mostly a civil issue and the tribes have full jurisdiction over civil matters on tribal land. So they're basically, you know, going down the road thinking they've got jurisdiction over this situation. However, they say the state regulations require tribes to be licensed to waste sovereign immunity to get a license. And because this allows the state to do what they want on tribal land, they don't want to go along with that. So, so they don't like that idea. They want to do what they want to do on their land. So they're spending a lot of time working with Assemblyman Bonta to get an agreement that allow them to sell cannabis off of their tribal land. And during the next year, when they think they're going to be able to sell under the medical provisions, they're going to work to get a bill passed that would allow them to participate in the California cannabis market. As I recall, two things were found out and brought to the council multiple times during the big casino debate. And one was that the fact was discovered that once the land becomes part of the tribal lands, that they can actually pretty much do whatever they want on that land. The other is they can also easily acquire other lands and expand and grab, you know, just expand their empire, so to speak. So now it's very well looking like that we could end up with something that it appears we, the council clearly does not want in Ridgecrest, and that is a marijuana farm right there on the top end of town. And probably easily for them, they can just sell it, put a little nook in their casino and sell it right there. We tried to warn the council of these kinds of possibilities back during the whole debates. And now it looks like it may, it may be on us. And we may end up getting what we think we're going to ban, what we can, but we're going to get it anyway because we wanted to have the casino over the objections of a lot of people. So I've got two more copies of this, I'm going to, two or three, I'm going to set over here on the table. People can look at that. I just have to say, it's sad that this has developed and gone this direction. I hope that maybe something can come up where we might not have to actually have this facility in town, since we're not going to want this possibility, I can easily project.
I've asked Ron if he would address that because we do have an answer.
Yeah, we are, we are aware of this. It is going to be addressed at the first Tribal City Committee in November. I have spoken to Representative of the Tribe, and it is not their intent to sell or grow marijuana from the casino. There is an issue that we currently have an ordinance that prohibits sales and cultivation of medical marijuana, but we're going to be coming back to council here real quick to then prohibit commercial. The way the MSA has written is the tribe has to agree to any new ordinances. They said that they would agree to this ordinance and the prohibition. So we'll just see where it goes, but like I said, it'll initially be addressed at the Tribal City Committee.
I will certainly hope they will stand by what they're saying they're agreeing to. The other thing I'd like to mention is, in case they don't, we're also going to have a large water problem since they will probably drill their own wells, pump their own water--
Let him address that, too.
Yeah, that's also going to be addressed on the exportation of water at that committee meeting. And then, in the conversation, they did say that they would agree not to export water. But obviously, that needs to be addressed between the city and the tribal council in writing, yes.
Absolutely.
So yeah, we're addressing that. Council's been apprised, and our concerns are your concerns.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I have a comment on this. I have a tremendous concern over this from A to Z, because for the same reasons that we had our water rights stripped out of the MSA, the land trust issue is in question, allowing other properties to be acquired, and then avoiding zoning laws, avoiding taxes, avoiding all sorts of things. These questions are still in question, and now we have yet another, here we go again, the main issue with the other two, water rights and land rights, are threatened by virtue of the fact that no matter what is said and what is done, one sovereign nation and all takes into full, full swing and a compact is done. The tribe is free to do as they wish because there's no one to enforce any of these things, including the $400,000 payment back to the city. There's no one to enforce it, as I've stated from beginning to end. The DA can't enforce it, the sheriff can't enforce it, the chief of police can't enforce it. It has to go to a, to a federal, the federal system, and any city who challenges anything has to pay upfront, which there is no money to pay upfront. And therefore, almost any issue which deals with this is going to be less with no enforcement, including this as well. So I have a tremendous fear of this. So regardless of what's discussed up here, the bottom line on all of this and this is that once, if this continues to go through and ends up stamped as a compact, anything goes, including this, growing pot at the front gates of the, front, front gates of the base and everything else is going to be free rein, and that's just a fact. So I have a very sincere concern, Mr. Neal, and, and Ron and council. So we'll deal with this in the nearby future. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
Good evening, council members and public. My name is Solomon Rajaratnam. I'm on Planning Commission and on Chamber of Commerce Board, but I'm talking for myself today. So first of all, I want to congratulate Mr. Strand for being appointed as city manager. Thank you for accepting the job, so. And most importantly, I want to commend the city council for doing, for a job well done in selecting a city manager. It's a, it's the essence of time. We need to do this because we cannot leave this city without a head, it is like a company not having a CEO or CFO. So I know, I commend you for following the process. You had a consultant and you had, as you said, 20 applicants and you interviewed five of them. So you did a good job, so I sincerely appreciate that. Some of these things go unnoticed, but it is a process. You put a lot of time into this, so that is highly appreciated. And now you have a couple of other positions to fill up. You have Police Chief to be filled up. That's no brainer. We, I think we have a very solid candidate within the ranks itself, so it's up to you. And we need to hire a Director of Finance, I think. That position is still vacant. We have Pan doing a lot of good things, so we need to have good support from within the administration to support her, whatever she is trying to do. So I just want to say that you take rapid action. I mean, I'm not saying you take un, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say unjustified action or something like that, but if you have good candidates, I want you to go ahead and fill up these positions as soon as possible. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Solomon. Anyone else? Okay, the next item is council announcements. Let's start at the semlency. Do you have?
Yes. So first, I'd like to announce that this Saturday at 11:00, at Pearson Park, we're going to have the grand reopening. We'll have hot dogs, there will be snow cones there, and I highly encourage you to come. Pearson, several hundred people came out and it was a blast, so please come out and enjoy that. And then the following Saturday, on the 28th, over here in the back parking lot, at 5:00, we will have trunk or treat. And then at 6:30, we will have an outdoor movie night sponsored by the Evan Etin--
Etos.
Etos, thank you. The Evan Etos Group. So that would be lots of fun. Come out, bring your families, friends, and it will be a great time, so.
Thank you. Wallace?
I don't have any.
Okay, the next item is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in remotion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by any one, that item may be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Item number one, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority, Housing Authority, Special Close Session Meeting dated September 27, 2017. Proposed action, item number two, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority, Housing Authority, Regular Meeting dated October 4, 2017. Does anybody wish to have any of these items pulled? Does any of the public wish to have any of these items pulled? Okay, we will, a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, item number three, proposed action to approve a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council authorizing a one-time bonus in pay for city employees and subsequent allocation of the necessary funds. Sir?
Yes, ma'am. At your request, I'm bringing this resolution to council for consideration and approval. As you know, that the employees of City Ridgecrest have not seen a cost of living raise since 2008. The city declared a physical emergency in 2012, and we've been slowly recovering ever since. However, our current economic condition is not such where we can provide the employees a cost of living raise. So in an effort to show the employees or to appreciate the employees' hard work through all these times, council has requested that I bring back a resolution authorizing a one-time payment of $1,000, a bonus payment for all full-time employees and $500 bonus payment, one-time bonus payment for part-time employees. The cost of this one-time bonus is $103,000, and in the resolution, it breaks it down by fund, where the funds will come from. So the request now is for the council to consider and approve this.
Okay, council comments? Public comment?
Yes, Steve Matthews, I just had one question. I noticed in the fund breakdown that there was some amounts coming out of the sewer fund, sewer fund, I think it is, or whatever. And I was wondering, is that illegal? Do we actually have people being paid out of that fund?
It's paid out of the wastewater fund.
Wastewater fund, yes.
310.
Yeah, yes, sir. We do, we do have employees that work out at the wastewater facility--
Oh, okay.
--and they are paid out of the fund. And that, these, these funds represent actually where the employees are paid out of.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, any other public comment? Okay, seeing no council comment? Oh, you want to make one?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I'm thankful for the employees hanging in there despite not having a cost of living raised, and I hope that they can see this as our showing that we value them and appreciate all the work that they're doing for us, so.
Okay, is there any other council comment? Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, discussion and prior direction to the city's representative on the board of the Unilever Valley Groundwater Authority, that's me. I have, did Keith tell you anything that he wanted? Because I have only one item that, and I don't think it needs our approval, but I just want to make sure that we understand about the Prop 1 funding.
No, please go ahead. Keith had nothing to add.
All right. He, we have a, an application for Prop 1 funding to help facilitate the beginnings and the development of grant monies for the running of the GSA. And we are making, there was, it went through the PAC committee, it went through the TAC committee. All of them have looked at it and come back. There was a couple of minor changes, some of them in the distinction of where the allocation or the emphasis was, but for the most part, it stayed the same, and we are seeking that. And we will have the first reading. We aren't going to approve it. We are having the first reading. And I sent it all to you so you could see what the reading was. But I just wanted to make you aware, there was a report from the PAC and TAC. There's going to be a report from Stetson Associates on the, on his report. And we have a closed session item, of which I don't know what it is, but it is anticipated litigation, and I don't know what it is, so I can't report on it. Is there any questions from council on any of these items?
I, I had one. The Stetson Engineering, what was their estimated cost? Do you recall that? I cannot recall what number that was. I just saw his bill in there, for one month's worth of service was over $20,000, and that just seems, I mean, how much money did we start with?
They're waiting until they get the total amount. They're, they can, they're, there is, there is monies for us for $1.5 million, should all the projects qualify. But we don't know that that is indeed what it's going to be, or if all the projects will qualify. And there was some legitimate discussion about how the, how the, the projects were written up and their evaluation of them, and I think that it will be resolved. But no matter what, it is not monies that are coming directly from the City of Ridgecrest. This is different, or from any of the entities involved. This is grant money from the State Department of Water Resources.
But how much grant money was there right now? There wasn't that much.
$1.5 million is available.
But that's not in our possession now.
No, no.
What's in our possession now?
$450,000 was what was--
Started, was what we started with.
No, it wasn't. Wait a minute, let me, I didn't bring that paperwork. Did I? No. Do you happen to have that information?
It says the ending's out. It's, it just gives the ending. Fund analysis, sorry. The fund analysis said that at the end of September 7th of 2017, there's $293,000 left.
Yeah, there was 450 originally, I believe.
Okay.
There was seven, no, 375,000.
Okay.
Because we got half in the, in the northern, the Central Valley GSA got the other half.
So, yeah, I just have concerns over charging $20,000 a month. I mean, that just seems like a lot to me.
Well, you don't know that that's going to be the amount each time--
Well, this is, okay, yeah.
Because it's, it's based on his work.
Okay.
And once we get it up and approved, I would assume that a lot of that work will not be, will not fall back on the city as heavily as it has in the past. Is that a fair assumption? I would think so, but I don't know the facts on that. None of us know the future. It's just that we will have costs. Okay, is there any discussion? Any public comment?
Yes, Mike Neal again. I can bring some light to that last question. The original estimate for the two years to get to the GSP plan and all that for this particular firm was $250,000. However, the latest projection for the first six months of work was $200,000. So it's a guaranteed fact, it's going to cost a lot more than $250,000 for the two years of work. I'm projecting probably at least 600. So it's not going to be cheap, as, and why would anybody expect it to be cheap? These firms get paid a lot of money, and there's a lot of work, including a lot of busy work to be done, so.
I don't think any of them are doing busy work, and I think that's undefendable to call the, the work that's being done by anybody here busy work.
Well, state, you know, rules, tons of forms, things like that, takes a lot of time and a lot of extraneous, but anyway, that's my opinion. One thing I'd like to bring to your attention here, and I just grabbed, I've only got three copies of this, so. Please share this, share this around, and this is an item I'm going to bring up a public comment tomorrow. Mrs. Breeden has already heard this. I think that these are, this is information that I think, I'm going to request that this be made publicly available for a matter of information to the public. These are questions, the first one, I think I got labeled June 5 questions, were questions put into possible, you know, you could ask these questions of all four of the original candidates. Now, I didn't see these before, until just recently, however, my, you know, conjectures about where I use the term the water Nazi mechanism, I think, are backed up by what appears to be some other. And there was county staff, there was, I think, two of the board members, and then I was told there was another outside-- I was told there was another outside water guy, I forget the name, who contributed to these. Let me just read you the ones on the second, third, and fourth pages here that I've underlined to show you what kinds of possible things might be coming down the pipe, just so you're aware. Down there it says, "The Sigma provides in section Upti Up that a GSA has the authority to control groundwater extractions by regulating, limiting, or suspending extractions." That means, that law says they can go tell somebody that you can't pump water anymore, or you can only pump so much, or whatever. Well, yeah, that's what you would expect from an agency like this in order to keep a basin level over forever, or whatever. The next one says, "The county apparently is considering a well metering ordinance that would affect people in the valley, so what do you think about that?" So, you know, that's, I think we all knew that was coming. However, be prepared for the fact that there will be a lot of unhappy people. And I looked up the Todd Report, there's approximately somewhere between 1,300 and 1,500 private well owners in this valley, so it could be quite a few unhappy people in this valley, and that starts. Then the next one, they start to talk about interim pumping reduction measures. Here's one where I'm going to say the great minds think alike, because it sounds like somebody who posed these questions was thinking just like I was. "How will you handle the implementation of a GSP that will most likely involve imposing controversial, contentious, if not draconian, decisions to severely restrict pumping?" If that doesn't say somebody's thinking that to solve this problem, you're going to really have to restrict people until it hurts, then I'm not real sure how else you would state it. Then the next one says, "The manager responsible for implementing a GSP may involve the stark reality of greatly reduced pumping." So, there you have it. The kind of things that could well be happening in this valley from the decisions of the GSA, so I just think that this council, as you go forward and you are making recommendations to our representative, you're aware that these, this kind of thinking is existent at the staff, the county, and the water board members' level, at least for some of them. And this is actually, some of these things have already been posed by one member of the PAC committee who wants to stop everybody from pumping until it hurts, until the aquifer replenishes itself and gets, and actually rises in level. So, you know, there's not just a few people at the top levels thinking this way either, so, thank you.
Mike, let me address one thing you said. It's been proposed, I don't know who has proposed that, but no matter what, it takes a majority vote.
Right.
And so to assume, and these were questions that were asked, I was not involved in the interview of these people.
Right.
There were two of the GSA board members, and they wrote those questions, I think, to elicit answers, and that doesn't mean when you ask a question, you are making a proposal that this is the way it's going to be, what do you think?
Right. I'm well aware of that.
Okay, well, you didn't ask it like that.
I'm pointing out that these possibilities are in the minds of people, and, you know, without conserving till it hurts and going and buying imported water that's going to cost like crazy, I don't really know how you're going to keep an aquifer level around here, so, there you go.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Stan Ratora. At the last TAC and PAC meetings, which was a joint meeting with both the TAC and the PAC, I believe that both the TAC and the PAC suggested that there be an additional meeting of the official board that is the groundwater authority before they actually finished action on this to give the PAC and the TAC time to go back and review any proposed changes or do whatever. They had reason and logic for requesting that, and I would hope that the city representative
I intend to.
would support the request of the PAC and the TAC, assuming they still want that to happen. You know, maybe they'll agree that it isn't needed, but at the point, the last point I heard, they were wanting an additional meeting of the board, and I would hope that you all would.
And I want to hear from them tomorrow if they still believe that is necessary.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Any other board comments? Okay, there was no general action on that because we are not voting on things that at this time. Okay, the next item, discussion and, oh, that was it, sorry. Number five, proposed action to approve a resolution to approve a professional services agreement with the engineering firm of David Evans and Associates in the amount of $20,400 for improvement plans to repair and/or reconstruct the existing sewer lines in the intersection of South Down Street and West Bowman Road, and authorize the interim city manager, which is now not interim, to execute the agreement. Mr. Cull?
Yes, Honorable Mayor. First of all, on a personal note, I'd like to thank the council and the city manager for recognizing your city staff and that reward for our efforts there. That was very, that's very nice. I certainly appreciate that on a personal note, and I'm sure there's others within our ranks. You know, oftentimes our work here, you know, can be very challenging, and we have, you know, we have constraints that we have to overcome, and, you know, they're sometimes very thankless work, but sometimes rewarding, so that's very much appreciated on a personal note there. I want to thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to serve the public and serve your needs as well. I certainly appreciate that I can give some service to you. I appreciate that opportunity.
I'll accept that on behalf of the city council, and I think we all stand behind Councilwoman Stevens' response to the efforts thanking you for doing what you do and for how long you went without a cost of living raise. I know I haven't gone eight years. I don't imagine many people have, but thank you for all that you do.
We just wish it could have been more.
Yes.
Thank you. It's genuinely appreciated. Thank you. Well, Honorable Mayor, City Council, this is an item that we're asking for you to approve a professional services agreement with David Evans to proceed with a design for a replacement of a sewer line that we have problems with in our intersection of Bowman Road and Downs. The project is a priority project for our Phase Two of our sewer line repair, replacement, rehabilitation program, and we'd like to get this, of course, repaired or replaced prior to our HSIP project for the four-way stop intersection. There are other improvements to that intersection in which we feel it's necessary to do this sewer line prior to any of our surface work in the intersection. So with that, Honorable Mayor, I'm requesting that you take the action to authorize the city manager to go ahead and sign that agreement and award a contract to David Evans.
Okay, is there discussion from council? Discussion from the public?
Mike Neal again. Having just been informed yesterday evening that there was yet one more accident at that intersection, I have to ask, can we not get the other stop signs put up and not have to wait on sewer work or any other work on that intersection soon, like next week? I just hate to keep hearing about accidents there, and I drive those roads, and I'm well aware there's stop signs, and you guys do have the flashing lights on the ones on Bowman to, you know, increase visibility. Something's not working well there because people keep getting hit there. I mean, that's like, if you want to take a quiz and say, "Where do you think somebody just got hit in Ridgecrest?" You know, Bowman Road, okay, you know, that's the one. We shouldn't, I just really, the ground is, put this, how hard is it to go stake a stop sign in the grounds to inform me?
Well, there's procedural requirements. The procedural requirements are that there has to be a warrant study performed, first of all, to legally place stop signs, or at least to have them enforceable, to have the proper procedure of going through a warrant study and finding that it is warranted, and then being able to have an enforceable four-way stop intersection. I might mention that we have gone to Caltrans and asked them to move monies forward to expedite this project, and we have been successful in that. Typically, these HSIP projects, you design for one year, you get authorization for money for the first year for your design, and then the next year you get your construction money. Well, we've gone to Caltrans and say, "Look, we can't wait. We want to move this thing forward. We need the money now." And so they are moving the money forward, so we are expediting the project.
Is there anything that we can, is there anything, I don't know if I'm breaking protocol or not, but I don't care, just for two seconds. Is there anything we can do to take any kind of vote on anything to help you get money to put the signs in the ground without all this yada, yada? Is there any, I mean, I'm asking you. So Lloyd, can we do something right now to get the signs in the ground?
Well, we can't, the council cannot take an action that's not on the agenda, but you're making a council member comment, so I won't stop you from making a comment.
Well, but let me take one step further. Can we say, you said we can't do it because, among other reasons, is that it's not enforceable, Lauren, but can we just put the signs up? And if they're not enforceable, most people will stop anyhow.
You're here.
They're not going to say whether the signs are enforceable or not.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Can we just do it that way?
I'm afraid of a liability there. I'm afraid that if we had, if there were an accident, let's say, as a result of that, let's say someone.
How can we be liable for putting up, these are stop signs?
Well, it could be an errant driver, or a driver that is not accustomed to that stop sign, that would be an errant driver, or an abusive driver that want to run it, or someone distracted could still have an accident, and without going through the proper protocol, you could be liable.
Could we put a, I know in real estate and so forth, in the back of the paper, there's a section that's every day running, I get exactly, it's any kind of new business or alcohol license or this, is there a way to put a notice in the paper that states we're putting up two stop signs on this place to get us out of that?
I'm not aware of that rule.
Can I ask a quick question? So you said we need to do a warrant study. Have we done the warrant study yet?
No, we have not.
So.
The engineer of record is also this David Evans, and they are tasked with that, and that's a requirement.
Is that part of this money that we're approving, or not?
No, that was, you have awarded a contract to David Evans for this HSIP project for the design and construction management for the, for the intersection.
So the warrants is part of that.
So that is a part of that, yes. We have to go through an environmental process first. We have to, I mean, there's a process for this federal money. And so anyway, we've already launched it, the engineers started, and so.
I understand that we're trying to do, like, grading and sewer improvements, but before all those things, can we get the stop sign put in before all of those improvements?
I don't believe so. I think that the, with this being a federal grant program, there's a prescribed process, and so I would be hesitant to say absolutely that you could. I think not. I think we have to stick to going through the warrant study to come up with a design, to have that approved, and then move towards construction.
What's to keep us from simply, you go all over town, and they have these relatively inexpensive temporary type signs with a little solar pad, with the little lights around it. What is to keep us from putting a couple of solar-operated temporary caution signs to answer an urgent need because it's every month someone else gets smashed? Can we authorize funding for a couple of temporary signs with lights to say, "Be careful at this intersection"? Is that going to require a federal study too?
I think that might be possible. I think that there are methods in which we can put warning signs or advisory signs that.
Well, if we could do that quickly, wouldn't that be nice and something, and address Mr. Neal and also the citizens who keep banging? I don't get that intersection, but the bottom line is, I don't have to get it. Whatever it is, Poltergeist or whatever, it ain't working at the intersection. And I was saying this to my wife this morning. She told me, she says, "Are y'all going to do?" I said, "I know Mike's going to be talking about it, so I need to talk about it too." I say we get some flashing lights up, that would be a nice something while we're waiting.
We did, staff has installed signs in advance of the intersection to notify of a crossing there. So we do have advanced warning signs there now, however, they're not of the fashion that you have indicated, the flashy type of solar-powered signs.
We do have the police on a text sign, seldom used except at the DUI checkpoint, as far as I'm aware, other special events, perhaps, something could be put on that, it could be parked at least going south or north, whatever's the worst direction on Downs, and something, you know, judiciously worded to just warn people, "Be careful down there," you know? So maybe a few less people get hit until we finally get the stop signs up.
Yeah, let me weigh on this a little bit. We have a few hundred accidents every year within this community. We have them at fully controlled intersections that have been established for the 30 years that I've been here. Accidents happen for a whole variety of reasons. Sometimes they happen because somebody sees a car coming and they take a chance, think they can get across the intersection. We can put up everything in the world, it's still not going to stop our accidents. I mean, we can do our best to try and monitor the intersection, do everything we can, but they're still going to occur, regardless of what we do.
No, I understand that. I mean, maybe it's just high visibility for whatever reason. You know, we, I don't know if we've gotten the numbers, but I mean, you know, the police could probably tell us, "Well, there's, you know, a higher, more than higher percentage number of accidents there," or not. It just seems like they're, they're all, and there are some simple things we could do, I think, to enhance the safety there at that intersection. Throwing out the ideas here, you've got some good suggestions.
Honorable Mayor, just to let you know, staff is very aware of the intersection and the number of accidents that occur there. We're very sensitive to that, and we have taken actions to try to notify oncoming traffic there. And I can tell you that we will look at any other methods that we might enhance the warning of vehicles coming there. Of course, it will have to be, we will have to follow whatever the MUTCD might require us for installation of any traffic control device, but we will certainly look into that.
Would you be able to let us know by next meeting how we are, how this can be accomplished? Or is that asking too quickly?
No, I think we can, we can look into what the requirements are through the MUTCD and come up with a solution very quickly.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Stan.
In listening to the conversation, I became curious, will a warrant that we have already addressed or went out on contract on, would that warrant be adequate for the stop sign? Or is that warrant only good for a stop light?
Well, there's two different warrant studies, ones for stop signs and ones for traffic signals.
Okay. I was just thinking if we could get that warrant expedited, that we could use that warrant for the stop sign, but obviously we can't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, council? Motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, item number six. Consideration of a letter of support for the four projects proposal. Mr. Spear? Mr. Spear?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, this item is for the city council to consider a letter of support for the four projects' proposal. Uh, Mr. Mike Senat, he identified four potential projects that may enhance the quality of life in Indian Wells Valley. He presented these projects to the city organization and services committee. The committee commended Mr. Senat on his efforts and directed staff to bring a letter of conceptual, uh, conceptual support to the council. Uh, the projects are, that were identified were the Highway 395 Cabana Project, Business Route 395 Project, Mahan Street Project, and the Ridgecrest Safe Routes Trails Project. Uh, specific information, uh, was actually attached to this agenda item, and it's contained in a summary that had been prepared by Mr. Senat. In terms of, uh, recommendation, the committee's recommendation for the council is to consider the approval of a letter of conceptually approving, or, excuse me, conceptually supporting, uh, these proposed projects.
Okay, is there a public comment on this item? Count, oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't believe you were gonna stay quiet.
No. I just-
That wasn't a, I wasn't being-
I'll be really, I know.
I wasn't making fun of you, bad joke, sorry.
That's okay, I know exactly what you meant. Um, my name's Mike Senat, and I, first of all, want to congratulate Ron for being the city manager now, and, uh, I also want to thank two people that came here tonight that I've, I've talked to, um, about this, and, uh, first is Tom Frisbee, who is the owner of Frisbee Bicycles, and next also is Greg Winkle, who is the owner of the Desert Sports Center, which is the Honda dealer. And, uh, I've, I've solicited the input from, from both, both of these gentlemen, as well as the off-road community and the BLM Public Lands Roundtable, and the current, Eastern Kern County Resource Conservation District, which I am hopeful to have a, a letter, um, supporting the four projects from that organization too. I'd also like to thank Dennis, um, for helping me understand how this system works, and Lauren gave me some encouraging words early on. He's, he said, uh, you just tell me what you want and I'll build it. And that was, that was-
That's all?
That's, that's all I needed. You tell me what you want and I'll build it. And, uh, and I'd like to thank the staff at the Ridgecrest City Hall, because I've been in there a lot bothering people and, and getting, getting, uh, getting my word out. Um, and then I'd like to thank, obviously, Mayor Breeden, because you've been listening to me and letting me walk into your office now for the last three years, and I appreciate that, um, a lot, because I know how hard it's been sometimes, and I come in on Thursdays.
Thank you.
So, that, just quickly, the news, um, I, I talked to the, the field manager at the BLM today, and, and they're gonna put, um, this into their project pipeline with the OHV grant next year, at least for the cabana projects. And the first cabana is targeted to be the Brady Road Trailhead, which will give the community something to see and, and use. I also talked last week to Kern Cog's Director of Planning, Rob Bell, Ball, I mean, who, uh, who was here a couple meetings ago, um, discussing the regional transportation plan. And, uh, he was, he was, I think, excited for Ridgecrest about the ideas that are in the plan, and he talked about, I talk about Ridgecrest's front door being South China Lake Boulevard, he uses the term gateway corridor, which, that's, you know, that's a good, good term. Um, I understand that there's a little progress, at least looking at the extension of the bike path from Downs and Bowman up to Mahan and the Mahan Street Project, so that, that door's open, um, the cabana project doors are open, and, and I believe the South China Lake Boulevard project is, is, uh, gonna proceed through, through the Kern County planning, um, because I've got favorable feedback from, from Supervisor Gleason, and, and I've had a lot of time spent with Denny Klein on this. And then the, um, the other comment that I'll make is that this is like a really good time to be coming out with this, this plan, because the state of California, um, the governor just signed SB 249, which is the, the Off-Road Transportation, um, Motor Vehicle Bill, and it also, there was a companion bill, I don't remember the number of it, but it permanently creates the funding mechanism for off-road vehicle grants. So, there's gonna be a, uh, a regular potential for development of the off-road vehicle, um, recreation for our, for our area. And I, and the, the other, the other timely aspect of this is the, is the fact that it is coming out with the, the, in conjunction with the regional transportation plan through Kern Cog, and this, this fits in really nicely with what they, they talk about in their, in their, um, presentation, about maintaining, fixing, and finishing what we have, and increasing bike, bicycle lanes, paths, and sidewalks. So, so the, the, the projects are basically beautification of our, of our gateway corridor, it's, it's off-road vehicle enhancement and, and creating a mechanism so people can, in the, in the city can use off-road vehicle opportunities. And it's a, it's a big, it'll be a big deal for the bicy, the bicycle community, and, uh, and I, and I only probably would have been able to put all these pieces together as a result of last year buying a bicycle for, for health reasons, just to get healthy. And I've ridden probably a couple hundred miles now throughout Ridgecrest and the surrounding area, so it really helped, and the mountains too, I've been riding up in the mountains. And so it really helped me understand where the, where the needs are. And, anyway, um, I want, I just thank you, and I appreciate the, the consideration.
I have to say, Mike, that you and I have, I, I was gonna say two, but you said three, so I'll take it. Um, but you have done a, a wonderful job making this presentation, soliciting support from all over the county and the state, and I appreciate you going to BLM and making them see the value therein. I only have one question, you just handed us a new project. Now, this is significantly thicker than what was given to us, and, and you just gave it to us tonight, so I haven't read it, I don't know how it changes these four, but-
It doesn't, it's, it's just all the supporting and, and some of the sales pitch, I, I trimmed it down just to save on printing costs.
Okay, all right, so we are approving in concept these four proposals as written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment or council comment?
No, I just wanted to, to say thank you, Mike. Uh, I don't really know you, sir, and I'd like to have coffee with you sometime. I did spend two hours driving, 'cause I, I, you, you have city, some of these are kind of intermixed with city and council, I mean, and county, and there's some easement issues, and you have, as a, as a, you know, marketing person and a technical writer, you have a couple of issues, I'd like to suggest a ways to make your, your pitch and presentation a little bit cleaner and, and better, it might be more sellable to you. But having said that, we can talk about that offline, 'cause I, I drove around trying to say, look, I want to know where this thing starts, where it stops. What are you talking about, this cabana and that? Is there a picture here where I can see? I need to see exactly. Now, I know that you have some of this, and somebody said you have a poster, and you did present some things at one of the other meetings, but I, I, and so that, that's terrific. So, what I'm saying is, I don't want to diminish that with the, it's a compliment, I think, I applaud your doing this for several years, I applaud your drive and your energy in bringing some new, fresh things to the city, and I think it's terrific. So, from a standpoint conceptually, that's what we're, what we've put together here, you have to have something from the city that says, yeah, uh, conceptually, we approve this, so then you can go to the county, and they, the first question they're gonna have is, yeah, Mike, does Ridgecrest want to do any of this? And you have to have some kind of initial support from us, right?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so from that standpoint, I, I, absolutely, this is a concept-
This is all just trying to get everybody on the same page and-
Yeah, no, and I think you've done a great job.
Okay.
And so I'd like to meet with you and have lunch, if you're open to some ideas from a presentation to make this stronger, so you can help sell it.
I'd like that.
But I like your ideas, and you, you have my full support, I've, conceptually, I think it's terrific.
Someday if we want to get one of the buses-
I would like to go with you and let's drive, on videotape and, I, so it's clear as a bell what each of these projects are.
We'll get Stan to drive.
Stan can drive, all right. Oh, God, help us.
I've heard about that, I've heard about that.
God, help us, all right, thank you, buddy, all right.
Okay, is there any other council comment? There is no more public comment? Okay, motion?
Mo, I move yes.
Second? I guess I'll second it.
Oh, I thought that was your second, sorry.
No, I was asking for, nobody was saying anything, okay.
Wallace Good is talking for us. Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, number seven, opposed action to approve a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council setting days and hours for the operation of irrigation systems. Sir?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of city council, um, as part of our water conservation ordinance, uh, 12-9, um, the city is allow, is enabled to, uh, set by resolution allowable irrigation days and hours for water use, water use within the city of Ridgecrest. Um, in the past, we've wanted our watering schedule to be the same as the water districts. Our last schedule that was approved by city council was in February 2016. Uh, since then, in September of this year, uh, the water district updated their ordinance. Uh, this resolution is setting, um, our watering schedule, uh, the same as theirs. Uh, the change particularly is, uh, for watering schedule for the months of November, December, January, and February, um, it's going from, uh, one day a week for our residents up to, uh, three days a week based upon whether or not your address is odd or even. So, I'm recommending that we, uh, the council approve this resolution, so our, our irrigation schedule is the same as that of the water districts for enforcement purposes.
Thank you. Is there any council comment? Any public comment?
Stan Ratoro? I, I think one of the problems that we've had locally here regarding this whole water, watering schedule, is that the public has not been told enough, or thoroughly enough, or often enough, that this only applies, at least for the water district ordinance, it only applies to automatic watering of sprinkler-type things that water grass above the ground, and it doesn't apply to manual, uh, watering of trees or grass, if you have a hose, that the ordinance, their ordinance doesn't apply, uh, and neither was drip system watering either, I'm almost positive of that. So, what I'm hoping is that this ordinance is clear, that it's just above-ground automatic sprinkler watering, and that it's, it's not implying, you know, something else, because the water districts tried to make it clear numerous times that, you know, there's a lot of kind of water, and you can do, it's legal, you can do it any day, any hour, um, and a lot of trees have died because people have misinterpreted, uh, the ordinance, and I hope that the wording that we've got in the city ordinance is, is similar to the water district, but is also clear about certain types of water not being applicable to this particular schedule.
It, it does contain a clause in there that says, except for hand-watering and/or the use of drip irrigation system.
Okay.
The water district has made it clear that they do not want to see our trees continue to do, to die.
It turns out, no matter how many times they say it, though, for some reason, there's somebody doesn't get the message. And so, the, the more people that are saying that, the better we are off.
Okay, I agree. Okay, is there any public comment on this? Council comment? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is committee reports. City Org, Mike?
I was a little late to that meeting, but, um, as I recall, basically, the main item we discussed was the, um, four projects.
Yep, that was it.
I think we've talked about that enough tonight, sorry, Mike.
All right, uh, the finance committee. Lindsay?
Um, so, we just met on Monday, we went through, um, a hundred, we didn't go through all 144 pages.
247 pages.
But we went through a lot of pages of, um, in-depth of the finances from last year, and then, um, had some questions about some of that stuff, and then we also looked at, um, Tess did a good job, she filled out a financial health analysis that I had brought back from the League of Cities, which said that we don't have any major crises on the horizon, so that's good. Um, and we also, what else was there? There was two other things. I don't have my eyes-
That was basically, yeah.
That was, that was pretty much it. And then next month, we'll be going over the fourth, first quarter for this fiscal year.
And answering the last of Stan's questions.
Yes, and we had a few questions that we didn't get through, so.
Okay, infrastructure?
I would just like to thank Peggy for filling in for me Monday, I was up in the skies.
Don't ever ask me to, to fill in a meeting when I'm gonna get an agenda that thick and say, okay, be ready. I, uh, thank, but I, I will fill in anytime you need.
There it is.
Thank you.
I got a coffee.
Okay, um, infrastructure.
Uh, we meet next thir, a week from tomorrow.
Okay, parks, rec, and quality of life?
I did forget, actually, one, there, I knew there was one more important thing. We started looking at potential investment opportunities.
Yes, you're right.
Um, I found my, I don't know how I misplaced that, but, um, and so we are looking at if we can do more with our, some of our funds, rather than just leave them sit there, if we can put them in some CDs and whatnot, so we're looking into that more. Um, and parks and recreation, we just have those events that I mentioned at the beginning coming up, so.
Okay, um, parks, rec, and quality of life?
That, yeah, yeah, I just said those are-
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's what you just, I'm sorry, I thought you were adding, I'm sorry. Uh, youth advisory, is that, uh, second Wednesday, yes?
I, I think we're scheduled to meet on the 25th of, uh, this month, so we'll be able to report back at our next, uh, city council meeting, Madam Mayor.
Okay, the action committee, September, no, March and September?
Yes.
You're okay.
We reported.
Uh, RACBB?
First, it, we're gonna meet until the first, uh, Wednesday of, uh, November.
Economic development?
Uh, we just met and talked about, uh, what occurred at the ICSC Western Conference, and just kind of reviewed with them what we were doing. We also discussed, uh, the website that RACBB is developing, and we're gonna wait and see if it satisfies the needs that we felt like needed to be addressed for the city, so.
Okay, other committee boards and commissions?
I have Kern, Kern Cog tomorrow night.
Okay, anybody else have any others? Okay, city managers' report?
None at this time, ma'am.
Uh, future agenda items? Anyone? We've got our hands pretty full, um, right now, so we'll accomplish those as quickly and as best we can. Okay, mayor and city council comments?
I have nothing at this time.
I just wanted to thank staff again for, uh, all they do, and, uh, if you would like to, uh, contribute in your bonuses to someone, I am available to.
Direct it or take it.
Uh, probably both, Madam Mayor, this, no. I, I would, we just say thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to vote little bit, 'cause it was such a generous thing. Thank you. Wallace?
No, Lauren, thank you for your comments, and, you know, the deal is, I, I think we're moving in the right direction, we're getting some good stuff done, and it's because of, uh, a great part to all the great stuff y'all do, so that's only a natural thing, so thank you for- you for your, your comments. And my second question is, this is the shortest dang meeting we've had since I got elected, and I, I move that we, we establish a 722 moratorium on all future meetings. Not going to pass, I'm sure. Anyway, thank you.
Lindsay?
I'm good. Oh, you know, I just wanted to clarify. I saw some comments out there that we use Measure V for these bonuses, and that's not what we use, so.
We did not. If you look and see, you can see what funds they were taken out of and, and going to. Let me say one thing. We have a member of our staff who's having a family emergency, and so we were rushing to get done. I hope none of you recognized that we were trying to do that, but keep, keep an unnamed person in your prayers. She needs it. Okay, and so I will adjourn. Thank you.